John, Bob Anderson, Mayor, I'd just like to call to order the special city council meeting for Wednesday, August 10 at 3:00 PM for the purpose of conducting a review of the financial statements, approve the audit, and authorize submitting the state auditor's report and the publication of the summary of the financial statements in the legal, the official newspaper. The floor is yours.
Okay. Thank you very much, and also thank you all for allowing me to do this over the phone. I was told Ken a little bit ago I've got a 4 o'clock meeting here. This is allowing me to make that happen, so I really appreciate it. Thank you very much. Do you all have two reports in front of you? One called the audited financial statements, one called the report to the members of governance?
Yes.
Okay. We're gonna start with the audited financial statements first, and I'm gonna maybe pause once in a while and make sure everyone's on the same page as me, just because over the phone it's a little harder to visually see if you're following along. Okay? So, we're gonna start with the financial statements. Let's flip ahead to page 3. Okay. So, page 3, this is a portion, a segment of the auditor's report. So, I think last year, if I remember right, I went through auditor's report in pretty good detail, and I kind of explained what it is, what it isn't. Everyone kinda good with that? Everyone kinda remember that?
Yep.
Okay. So, I'm not gonna go into as much detail this year then. What I do wanna point out is on the top of page 3, there's a section that says "Opinions." This is where we give the opinion on whether we think your financial statements are correct or not, and the opinion we're giving is the same as what you've gotten in the past. We're giving an unmodified, or you could think of it like a clean opinion. So, this is the one that you want. This is us saying that we think your financial statements are correct.
I have a question.
Yes.
You, this is Cynthia Jackson. We have a, your audit adjustments are significant, are they not?
Yes, they are.
Okay. So, if we're looking at financial reports on a monthly basis, you would say that those aren't significantly correct though, correct?
Well, what I will say is that many of the adjustments that we recorded were related to converting you from cash basis to modified accrual.
That's right.
And so, I would say that it would be fair to say that the reports you're getting on a monthly basis likely do not follow the modified accrual basis.
No, they don't. When we look at our balance sheet, we're looking at balances that are from the prior year at year-end.
Sure. That's not surprise.
Yeah. Okay. And that's typical for small cities, correct?
It is. Yep. Yep, it is.
If, with, how much effort would it be to, seems to me that it wouldn't take all that much know-how to really do monthly adjusting entries, am I right?
Um, you know, it depends on where, what you want adjusted, and you maybe need to take a step back and look at how much time is it going to take versus what benefit am I gonna, going to get from it? Smaller things like maybe like prepaid expenses, is it worth having adjusted on a monthly basis? It might be, but it might not be also for the time that it would take. So, you maybe wanna think about as a council, what do you want your monthly financial statements to really look like?
Okay. I just wanted to ask that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions on the opinion?
No.
Okay. The section below that is something that you don't always see every year. It's called emphasis of matter. There's two things in there that are showing up this year that I would expect won't be there going forward. The first is called change in accounting principle. So, this year, the city adopted two new GASBIA accounting standards, statements, called GASBIA Statement 68 and 71. We're gonna look at the effect of that in a little bit here, but basically what it's done is it's required the city to record a portion of pension liability on your books. We'll look at that in a little more detail. The next line is prior period adjustment. This is a restatement to last year's financial statements, and so what happened last year, when we got your scheduled receivables, it was missing a receivable for your multimodal project, a grant receivable, and so we've corrected the financial statements for that. Okay? Everyone with me so far?
I have another question.
Yes.
Um, we, one of the things we haven't been doing, and I guess I'm surprised we're not doing, is accruing vested vacation leave and on the balance sheet at least once a year, so we can see the true state of our unrestricted fund balance. We don't have all the liabilities fully accrued in the payroll. Am I correct?
You know, this is Cynthia I'm talking to?
Yep. I'm the only woman on the, sitting here.
Okay.
Well, Betty's here, but she's not.
You know what, Cynthia? I would have to look into that.
Okay. Well, it was-
I don't have an answer off the top of my head.
Okay. I think that it came to light last year when we had some retirements, and our general fund took a significant hit. It was not on the balance sheet already accrued, so it didn't go against the liability, it went against our general fund.
I see.
Yeah.
I can certainly check into that if you'd like.
And it was a surprise. Yeah. Anyway, just, so I would like to see a balance sheet, and I understand we're on this ridiculous thing called the modified cash basis, so you don't accrue long-term liabilities, right? You only accrue short-term?
Correct.
Yeah. I don't know why that is, but so a lot, I mean, it doesn't give us a full picture, right?
Yeah.
So, we really don't know, based on the modified cash basis, what our full liabilities are for vested vacation and sick leave, because those would be considered long-term liabilities. However, when we have a slew of retirements, then we're stuck with some big hits to the general fund that we really didn't prepare for.
That's very true. And actually, you know what, Cynthia? I do have, I do have an answer for you.
Yeah.
You are correct.
Yeah.
And it's because they're only shown on the government-wide statements.
Okay. Now, what I'm wondering is, let's follow this through. We do, where, I think we should be putting some restrictions into our general fund. We can do that as a council, resolve all the restrictions, so that we're fully aware of it.
You can, you can do not a restriction, because that has to be from an external source. You can do what's called an assigned or committed fund balance.
Okay. Yeah, we should be doing that then, because we have to live with this cash, modified cash basis accounting system.
50% we have to maintain.
Is that separately stated? But, is, there are no, there are no, at least that I'm aware of, and I-
Yeah. I think we're maybe mixing up two things there.
Yeah.
50% is what your targeted unrestricted fund balance would be, and actually, I was gonna talk about that in a little bit here, but we'll talk about it now since we're bringing it up. That's what, that's what the city's policy is for what you want your minimum fund balance to be.
Right.
I think what Cynthia is talking about is that she would like to see, and it's gonna take a council decision to do this, a separate fund balance set aside or committed for future severance.
So, that when we plan, we're aware of that liability.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That would be a council decision, so if that's something you want set up for next year's audit, maybe think about that over the next year, and you'll wanna make a motion to approve that.
Okay. Thank you.
We made some changes, this is Mayor Bob Anderson, we made some changes in negotiations last year to reduce that liability, and so-
Well, I think it's still significant. What'd you say?
Yeah. It's on your government-wide statements, you're looking at total compensated absences payable of $948,000.
Okay. A million dollars. Half of our levy. And it isn't like they're all gonna retire at the same time, God forbid, but it certainly is significant. And if we put that in as a, as a assignment in our general fund, at least, well, we'll talk about it later. Some courses-
That's something beyond the audit, so-
Well, I like to get an audit opinion, 'cause mine doesn't count, so it's nice to have someone confirm one. Thank you. All right.
Carry forth, John. Please.
Okay. We're gonna flip ahead, we're gonna look at some numbers now. Let's go to page 58. Okay. So, page 58 is a budget to actual for your general fund. We're gonna start with your general fund, and I'm not gonna go through every fund that the city has, because you've got a number of them. We'd be talking for half a day, so I'm gonna hit on some of the, some of the bigger funds here. So, the general fund, the way this is laid out, we've got a budget column for the first column, your actual activities second, we've got a variance column for the third. So, we'll look at revenues first. Total revenue is $396,000, higher than what you planned on. Now, there's a couple things going on here. The first line taxes is what really jumps out first. Taxes are above budget by $284,000. The reason for that is because the city levies property taxes totaling about $215,000 roughly this year that you earmarked for the airport. Okay? Now, in your budget, you don't include that as property tax revenue, you've taken that out already on your budget. The way we account for it is that we include it as property tax revenue, and then we show an expense down below, so you're gonna see another variance down below. It's just a difference in how we account for it versus how you budgeted for it.
So, because we have a separate fund for the airport, we put our taxes directly into the airport fund, but you're putting the taxes into the general fund and then transferring it out to the airport fund through an appropriation.
Correct.
Okay.
That's correct, because the airport can't levy on its own. Really, the city's levying and giving it to the airport.
All right.
Yep. Other line that, that jumps out is gonna be intergovernmental, so the third line down, about $81,000 higher than budget. That's gonna be your fire aid, so your state fire aid. This is the same kinda thing. See, the city collects fire aid, remits it to the Fire Relief Association. On your budget basis, you don't include that.
Okay.
But we have to, we have to gross that up, so we show the revenue and the expense.
So, you think we should change our accounting procedure on that?
It would give you a more accurate budget to actual.
Okay. Um, I have a question on the license and permits. We're really, half of what we thought we were gonna have, I guess. What happened?
I'm gonna defer to Ken on that one.
Yeah, I noticed that before too, and I don't have an answer for it. I don't know if there was some other, not much variance. I do want-
Any other questions on the revenue side? Okay. Okay. Next section below, and it's got more detail, is gonna be your expenditures. Expenditures came in at $4.9 million. You budgeted 8.4, 4.85. So, you're $109,000 higher than budget on expenditures. Those same variances I talked about on revenues with the airport, with the fire relief, they factor into expenses too. If we kinda look through and pick out the lines that really kinda stood out to me when I was going through this, first is gonna be police, so I'm looking at your public safety the second section, and police expenditures are below budget by $83,000. That's mostly payroll.
What happened there? No wonder. Paid there.
Probably had the best overtime.
Was that?
And we budgeted to give them additional $25,000 to all the part timers last year.
Thanks, Betty.
Um, next line also stands out, fire protection. This is partially because of that fire aid, that state fire aid.
Oh, no. Okay. Got it. Yeah.
Yep. Public works, street maintenance, that jumps out as well. That's gonna be a combination of payroll expense, some fuel costs, and insurance is lower than what you budgeted.
Okay.
And then, there's a line below public works, below culture and recreation for airport appropriations. This is where that grows up for airport contribution comes into play.
So, if you take the 214, 339 out of revenues at the top, and the bottom, we actually saved, actually, our expenses, if you take the airport out of it, our expenses were less than budgeted in total overall.
Correct.
By about $100,000, actually.
Yeah. And if you take the fire aid out, you're, you're over, you're below even more.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, you planned for a break-even year, you actually increased your fund balance by $286,000.
Yay!
Which is, that's good to see.
Yeah.
Your ending fund balance is $2.8 million. So, we talked a little bit about, just a little bit ago, about your policy, your 50% policy. Right now, you're at about 58%.
Fifty-eight percent of what? The 5.2 million, or the 4.8, or what?
Uh, your policy is 50% of budgeted expenditures.
So, it would be the 4.8. 2.8 divided by 4.8 is 58%.
Yeah.
So, we really only need 2.4.
Yeah. To meet your policy, yeah. And may, you know, maybe if, if you're serious about assigning or committing some fund balance for severance payouts, you've got, you've got room right now for that.
Okay. You know, and I wouldn't ever take the whole $948,000 because, because, because it would hamstring us. That's what it would do.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Um-
Should we move on?
Yeah.
Okay. Next page, page 59. This is your ambulance fund. Ambulance fund doesn't have a lot to say necessarily. We're looking at revenues of $1.6 million, actually quite a bit higher than what you budgeted for, 1.33 was your budget. Expenditures are also higher than budgeted, which is kinda what you would expect. You're, you're, you're paying out more, you're collecting more. More activity than what you planned on.
I know we changed our rate structure, but I thought, was that effective?
We changed it this year.
2016?
I think it was, I think it was effective in October of 15.
15? Okay. So, it's a, it's a combination of price and volume that's driving that revenue and not one or the other?
Yeah, we had more run to-
We also had more volume. It was both, okay.
Yeah. That makes sense to me, because your expenses are up as well. Fund balance increased $155,000, which is good, because last year you were at a deficit of $18,900.
I think, did we have a major purchase last year?
Yeah. That rings a bell to me.
Yeah.
Okay. Page 60 is the EDA. Now, the EDA is not the city per se, but it qualifies as a component unit, and so it gets included in your financial statements, as if it were part of the city. EDA budgeted revenues, 1.49 million, actual was 1.41. You're about $76,000 lower than budget in the EDA. That all pretty much contributes to this line miscellaneous that you budgeted 113, and you didn't have any, any revenue there.
It would've been for staff.
Mickens property, isn't that what Betty just said?
I didn't hear her. Because bottom line is only $15,000. So, how would Mickens property involve a revenue item?
Ashen from the city, possibly? No?
Would've been a transfer from the fund balance, right? That would've, would've been?
Expenditures were 1.403. You budgeted 1.495. You're $91,000 below budget on expenditures, and that's capital outlay, $112,000 of capital outlay. It sounds like that must be the same, same reason your revenues are below.
Yeah.
Overall, fund balance increased $15,000. Ending fund balance is $209,000.
No, I'm surprised that our sales and charges for services are less than we budgeted. That should've been a pretty accurate number. It's only $5,000, so it really doesn't matter, but it's all contractual, so it should be right on, I guess, but I, shouldn't it? Yeah, that's probably it. It's not significant when you give the number, but-
Okay. These funds I just went through are the funds that we include a budget to actual in your financial statements for, and the reason for that is because we record, we're required to record a budget to actual for the general fund in any major special revenue fund, so a major special revenue fund would be one that has enough activity to justify it. The remaining governmental funds that you have all have positive fund balances, except for the Riverfront Improvement Fund, which has got a pretty significant deficit of $930, but if I, if I remember right, that's being whittled away through property tax levy each year.
Right. That's a tax evasion kinda thing.
Yep. Yep. And then the lodging tax fund has got a small deficit of $2,800, which is about the same as last year.
And that's a tiny thing.
Yeah.
I guess.
Okay. Let's take a look at page 23.
Are you gonna talk about water and sewer, or water?
Yeah, oh, that's where I'm going.
Okay.
You're jumping just a little ahead of me.
Okay. Oh, we went down? Oh, you gotta change an accounting principle there. Tell me about that.
Yes, we do.
All right.
Yes, we do.
'Cause I've been expecting that to go up, not down. Okay.
Well, that government accounting standard before just didn't want it to go up this year.
Ah, okay.
Okay. So, water fund, we've got service charges of $3.8 million, operating expenses of $3,999,000. So, you've got operating income of $740,000. What I usually preach to cities is that you want your operating income to be positive. You want your enterprise funds to sustain themselves, and that's what I'm seeing here.
Okay.
Which is especially good for you, because the way your chart is written, it's difficult for you to obtain additional debt, and water and sewer infrastructure is incredibly expensive.
And needs replacing up here too. Okay?
Yeah. We've got a little bit of non-operating activity, some taxes, tax levies, and special assessments. Not, nothing, nothing huge in the scheme of things. Overall, your net position before changing accounting principle, so you could think of this like your income went up $267,000. So, that's like you had a gain of $267,000 this year.
Okay. The 553, 944, that's the net transfers out?
Yeah.
Some of that is for capital outlay in the future, into our reserve funds.
It is.
And yet, you're including depreciation above there of $306,000.
Correct.
So, we're being amply, what are we doing here? We're-
Securing.
You're, you're preparing yourself for, for future-
I, yeah, I understand that, but we got, normally, I didn't think we put both depreciation and transfers, but, okay. Let's accept that. Okay?
Um, so, there's a line second to bottom, Cynthia, you pointed out right away, change in accounting principle, deficit of $460,000. This is related to that new accounting standard I mentioned earlier. We're actually gonna look at that a couple more pages in here.
Okay.
I'll explain more about that in a bit.
Is that, is that the pension?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
All right.
Let's look at page 25. This page is a snapshot of your funds where you're serving in more of a fiduciary capacity. And the most notable fund on this page is gonna be the Airport Commission. What we're looking at here, and we talked about this quite a bit last year, we've got a comment on it again this year, we're looking at a fairly significant deficit cash balance for the Airport Commission again this year, a deficit of $296,000. Now, you all don't have the Airport Commission's financial statements in front of you. If you did, you'd be able to see that they've got grants receivable at the end of the year totaling $596,000. And so, they've, they've got some construction activity going on, they had, they have to pay for the costs upfront. The city essentially fronted the money for that through this deficit cash, and then, in theory, they, the city would be made whole once they collect that receivable.
And I'm fine with that, you know, just as long as we know that there is no shortfall buried in that number, that we're not fully know.
Right. You're concerned about cash being in a deficit in excess of that receivable.
Right.
Yeah. We have a recommendation you're gonna see kinda at the very end here, but I'll bring it up now, because it's relevant. One thing that we thought of that you maybe wanna consider is, right now, the Airport Commission is using the same pooled checking account as the city, the same checking account that the general fund and all of your other funds use. One thing to consider, once this number becomes whole, once you collect this money, you may wanna consider getting a separate checking account for the airport. Now, the reason I say that is because if, if that were the case, there maybe would be more awareness to the city and to the council if the airport needed money for future projects. They would, they would almost have to request a transfer from, from the city's checkbook.
You can only do that with a physically, setting up a physical, a separate checking account? You can't do that with accounting? You can't, you can't-
You certainly, you certainly could.
Yeah.
I think, I think the fear is that it would run as a deficit, and maybe wouldn't be noticed right away.
Suppose a negative checkbook balance would catch everybody's attention?
Right.
Yeah.
I think the Airport Commission is, is working to keep that to an absolute minimum. We have worked with the Federal Aviation, as well as the Office of Aeronautics for Minnesota in seeing that our grant, our reimbursements are applied for as soon as possible, closing out projects.
Sure.
And so, we're trying to keep that to an absolute minimum.
Sure.
The one thing, though, that we couldn't see is if, you know, I divide the airport up into two pieces. I figure the grant projects are a separate accounting, because it needs to be, and then you, 'cause you have to track your grants, right? And then the operate, operations of the airport, and the revenue is earmarked for that, comes from the taxpayers and the leases and, what else? And the passenger facility charge, there's a number of items there that go into supporting the airport operations, as opposed to paving the runway and buying, you know, fire trucks, et cetera. So, what I would like to understand is where the operations sit in relation to the budget, because if you do expend over your budgeted amount, you're gonna end up with a deficit in operations, which we can't see, given the current accounting situation. And as a matter of fact, last year, when we had that $104,000 deficit, some of that was truly related to some expenditures that they made in relationship to moving- was truly related to some expenditures that they made in relationship to moving electrical lines for hangars that wasn't in the original budget. So, therefore, it would have had to exceeded the budgeted amounts that year. I think most of it was due to failure to collect on grants. But it's a kind of thing that I think we need to be aware of.
Yeah. And if the airport wanted to, they could certainly split up into... You could think of it like two separate funds, an operation and a capital project fund, and run them side by side. Now, with that being said, when it comes to the end, when we prepare the audit of financial statements, because of the nature of the airport, we'd have to combine them onto the financial statement. But if you want to run that for your own internal reporting as two separate funds, that would be a way of you keeping track of that.
I know. You're bound by financial accounting standards that has the airport fund classified as an enterprise fund. Therefore, you are not going to split operating versus capital outlay.
Right.
But I think from the standpoint of management, we're not... This is not a good thing management-wise, right?
Yeah. It would probably make it easier for you all to keep track of your operations.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Are we good with this page?
Yep.
Okay. We're going to jump back to page 15 now. We're going to talk about this new accounting standard. So, page 15, this is called your statement of net position. If you think about your city's financial statements, there are actually two sets of financial statements included in this report. There's the fund financial statements that we just went through. These are the numbers that you may be more used to seeing. And there's also what we call the government-wide financial statements. Government-wide financial statements take those fund statements and they convert them into a format more like what you would see with a corporation. So, they take your funds, they add in things like capital assets, long-term debt. And it is a few other changes, too. This change in accounting principle only affects your government-wide financial statements and your water sewer fund financial statements. I'm looking at it on this page, though, because it encompasses everything.
Say that again. What two funds are included in business?
Water sewer.
That's the only one?
That's the only one, yep.
Oh, okay. I thought you said there were two. Okay.
So, this statement, this new standard, only affects government-wide and your business type. And what it does, it makes the city... It requires the city to record its pro-rata share of any unfunded liability Pera might have. So, to rephrase that, if you think about Pera, you make contributions to Pera on a monthly basis. And then, eventually, your employees retire, they start drawing Pera benefits. Pera, every year, has an audit done, and they have an actuary come in, and they project out whether they're fully funded in their pension or if they're unfunded. Right now, Pera's sitting at an unfunded liability. And it's actually, it's a fairly significant dollar amount. What this new standard requires is, any government agency, this is nationwide, but Pera's only Minnesota, have to take their share of that liability and record it as a liability on their own books. It's not a... This isn't a check that you're going to have to write out to fund Pera. It's a mechanism of showing what the city's share of that unfunded liability is.
And the unfunded liability is...
Oh, yeah. If you go to the liability section.
Yeah. I see it, yeah. I see the amount. I'm just wondering what it represents. Does it represent... It represents pension payments to retirees when they retire? It represents pension income to pension retirees, right? Is that what that represents?
Basically, what it represents is, Pera's had an actuary hired that calculates out projecting out future expected payouts versus assets that they have and future expected growth. They don't have enough money to fund those future payouts.
Okay. So, it's just the deficit portion of those future payouts?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Yep. On the other hand, if you think about the pensions that the city participates in, there's Pera. The other pension that you participate in is your own Fire Relief Association. Your Fire Relief Association is actually fully funded right now. And so, because of that, if you go to the non-current asset section, there's a line that says net pension asset of $143,000. This is your share, or this is basically the full amount of Fire Relief's fully funded asset. So, when the pension does well, you get an asset. When the pension's behind, you get a liability.
What are... I mean, can we safely ignore this number? What do we...
Yeah.
We can't. We can safely ignore it?
That's the takeaway. You pretty much can, because there's nothing you can do that would affect it.
Okay.
Yeah. Actually, you bring up a good point. When I go through financial statements with the city, I typically don't go through these government-wide financial statements. And the reason for that is because I don't think there's a lot of value to a city. You don't necessarily care what your Pera liability is going to be. And you maybe don't necessarily care about the value of your water sewer infrastructure because it is what it is. You're not going to sell it off and convert it to cash at any point. I don't usually go through these financials. It's a big change, though, so I really want to touch on it.
Thank you.
Okay, let's keep moving, John. Here, we're going to get against your four o'clock sign here.
Okay, I'll keep moving. We're going to jump to page 76. We're getting towards the end here. Those numbers I went through make sense to everybody? I'm pretty much through the numbers.
Yep, yep.
Before I move on. Okay.
Yes, sir.
Page 76 and actually 77, too, these are going to be the findings to the audit. You've heard a lot of this every year for quite a few years. Segregation of duties is a concern. It's actually a concern with a lot of small cities. You're not alone there. But basically, what we're saying here is, you don't have enough people on staff to properly segregate duties how they should be. That being said, you do do... For the staff you have, you do a fairly good job of mitigating that. The second finding we have on this page is letting the users of the financial statements know that we've drafted them for you.
If we were going to do those monthly accruals and not have your audit firm do it?
Yep.
Can't... I mean, that could be something we might do. But I'd like to know what cost savings would we realize if you didn't have to do those adjusting entries? Are they significant in the overall audit cost to us to have you do it?
The bookkeeping is a... I would say it's a fairly significant portion of the audit cost.
So, we could save... What was our total audit cost this year?
You know, I don't know off the top of my head.
$29,000? Is that what it was?
No, no. It's 18,750. We paid an additional $4,000 or $4,500 to the bookkeeper. I don't know what the total is. We have to see the total.
So, you want me to understand from Ken's remarks that we could save about 5K a year?
I would say so, yep.
Okay.
If we had what we would call a truly clean audit, where we're not doing audit adjustments, there would be cost savings to you, absolutely. That actually plays into the next page, page 77. We've got a finding for material audit adjustments. And that's basically what we're just talking about, that we had to post a number of adjustments. The last finding on this page, prior period adjustment, this is related to... Remember, I said at the beginning, we did a restatement for that grant receivable for the multimodal. That's what this is related to.
Okay.
Okay?
So, would you say we're in strong financial shape?
I think so. You know, the... International policy is unique in the sense that your charter limits you in acquiring debt. You can do it, it's difficult. And so, because of that, you need to be in especially good financial condition. I would say that your general fund is exceeding your policy, which is maybe not a bad thing. You're doing a fairly good job of setting yourself up in the water sewer fund, but I think... I wouldn't be opposed to growing that fund balance more. You do have a fairly large pension liability that you'll want to think about. I like the idea of funding for that.
Okay. You have any good ideas about how we can raise that money?
Are you seeing?
Well, you know, like we talked about earlier, you do... You are above your policy in your general fund right now, your fund balance policy. So, I do like the idea of taking a portion of that and setting it aside.
Can you restate what you had said just a moment ago about, you said we have a fairly large pension liability? Did you mean the...
I'm talking about your compensated expenses.
Oh, the million, the 948?
Yeah, yep, yep.
Well, yeah, we can, you know... I mean, I think we can make a reasonable forecast of what the... When those might come due, because we have an understanding of our workforce. So, I think it could be done so that we could put that aside. We certainly can't put the whole 948 there, but...
Right.
I have one other question, but what was it? I was going to ask you about what other cities do, about something. What was it? Oh, well, it'll come to me. I'll have to...
Sure. If you think of it, or even if you think of it after the fact, just... I think you've got my email address. You can shoot me an email on it.
Okay.
One of the things that John and I had talked about before the meeting was that, you know, we had talked last year about the water sewer fund, and it would be... It's recommended by them. And we had talked about initiating the process to separate the water fund into a totally separate fund and the sewer fund into a totally separate fund. More transparent, easier to see what our balances are and where our money's going in the course of the year. So, we haven't had an opportunity to do that. They have offered to provide that assistance to us in terms of looking at assets and how we are allocated to the two separate funds. My thought is that that would be better, that we wait on that. And when we get somebody in a finance option position, if that person would weigh in and participate in that process, so... But it won't be anything that happens overnight, and we just haven't had the time to devote to it at all. But it's still something on the horizon. It's still something that we should do. And John and his staff have made reference to that in this report.
Yep. And actually, we're going to... I was going to look at that in a little bit here, but I'm glad you brought that up. We haven't totally ignored this. It's something that was on the radar. But like Ken said, it was thought that it would be best to wait until you maybe have the staff that you want for that piece.
And then, I'm thinking that that net asset figure in the water and the sewer fund, whether that's correct to the nearest $10,000, I think, is probably good enough, right?
I would agree.
Yeah. I mean, I don't want them spending hours digging through trying to get right to the dollar on this because it's just not worth it.
Yeah. We've got to consider materiality with it.
Yeah.
Can we talk really quick about the other report that we have?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Let's flip in. We're going to go to page two. And this is going to go pretty quick. I'm going to kind of run through the punch list here. These are things that we actually have a requirement to report to you. So, the last report we talked about, that talks about how the city's doing financially. This talks more about how did the audit itself go? Did we have any difficulties? And so, it talks about things like if we have issues with your accounting practices or policies, if we saw any unusual or significant transactions, or if we discussed any alternative ways to account for things with management. We didn't have any of that. Everything was really good in that regard. It also talks about adopting new accounting policies. What you did, you had GAFB68, which we already talked about. This report talks a little bit about estimates. So, there's estimates in the financial statements. These pension liabilities would be one. Another would be depreciation. None of them that we thought were really significant, though, significant risk. Page three I'm looking at here, corrected and uncorrected misstatements. We talked a little bit about this already. These are the audit adjustments we went through. And actually, they're included in this report if everyone wants to take a look at it in a little bit here. I'm not going to go through them all in detail here. Uncorrected misstatements. What that's talking about is, if we're going through the audit, we see something that maybe should be changed, but it's not material. And it's actually pretty small. We have the ability to pass on adjusting it and still give you that unmodified or clean audit opinion. We have one that's actually a projection. When we were going through and testing accounts payable, we came across a couple of things that maybe weren't accounted for right. And so, because of that, we have to project out to the population that there's a risk that you understated by a certain dollar amount. We have a projected misstatement there. We don't know if it's true or not, but we have to report it, that we have a projection there.
And where is that? What is the amount of that projection?
The amount, it's actually not in this report. It's going to be... It's immaterial. It's very small.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Disagreements with management, there weren't any consultations with other accountants. What that's talking about is, if you don't like that opinion we're giving you, and you go call up a competitor of ours and we do some opinion shopping, that's where it would get reported. But that didn't happen. Significant issues or difficulties, there weren't any. Letter communicating significant deficiency, material weakness, that's those internal control findings I talked about already, segregation of duties and that sort of thing. And then, the last piece written, communication between management and our firm, what that's alluding to is, at the end of the audit, we get a, what we call a representation letter from you. Basically, it says that you've provided us with all the information that we've asked for, you haven't lied to us, that kind of thing. Okay? I know that was pretty quick, but that's summarizing it really quick here. If we can look at the last two pages of this report? This is going to be our management's advice letter. This is what Ken was talking about a little bit ago when he was talking about the water sewer fund. So, the management letter is not a required part of the audit. It's something that we do in our audits to try to add value to it. It's things that we've noticed that you maybe want to think about. Water sewer fund's the first one. We already kind of talked about it, so I'm not going to revisit it. Water sewer penalties is the next. So, this is a comment we had last year, actually, that we're repeating this year. You may want to consider strengthening your policy on when you assess penalties on your water and sewer late payments. What I would recommend is that you do a penalty after one month. What's that?
I concur. I agree.
Yeah, yeah. I think that would help some with your delinquencies.
What's our ratio of delinquencies to receivables right now?
You know, Cynthia, I don't have that number off the top of my head here.
Okay.
I'd have to look it up for you. Do you want me to look it up for you?
Well, it would be a vital number to understand what's happening with water collections.
If you could get that at a later time, we have like 10 more minutes.
Yep. I'll look it up for you, and I'll send it over. I'll send it over to Ken, and he can share it with you.
Okay.
Okay? Voiding checks. This is a comment that we had actually last year, too. Actually, this is a compliance finding with Minnesota statutes. So, you've got a number of checks on your bank reconciliation that are old, some going out to about six years. You're going to want to take a look at those if... Maybe try to contact the individuals. If you can't make any contact with them, you're actually required to turn them over to the state. Okay? Authorized signers. This is actually a new comment this year. And actually, this has been taken care of already. One of your bank accounts has the former city administrator still listed as a signer. That's been taken care of now since the year end. On the next page, we already talked about the separate airport checking account. That's really about all I have.
Very good.
Any other questions for me?
Nope, nope. Most would be in order then to approve the audit of the final financial statements for the year ended December 31, 2015. Motion by Counsel Kaler to approve.
Second.
Second by Counsel Groban. Discussion on the motion over the audit. Any questions?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
And all vote yes. Motion is carried, and audit is approved. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Really appreciate it.
Have a good day.
Yep, you, too. Bye.
Bye-bye. Bye-bye. Okay, we move to item three and authorize submitting the state act, the state audit as reported. Counsel Drowa?
Second.
Second by Counsel Briggs. Discussion on the motion or authorizing the submit.
Is that something that's done already?
No.
Has to be by next Monday.
Okay. And that's a different format than this, right?
They do have a shorter report, yeah. He emailed something last week.
Question.
Aye.
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 We're gonna, we're gonna approve a report that hasn't been prepared yet and we haven't seen?
I haven't.
Okay, so we're all comfortable not looking at it?
It's this, but just abbreviated.
Yep.
Uncomfortable.
All right, I guess I am, too. Okay, aye.
I'll go yes. Motion is carried and authorization is given to submit that. Item number four, authorize the publication of a summary of the financial statement in the official newspaper. Motion by Counsel Kaler to approve.
I'll second.
Second by Counsel Drowa. Discussion?
Is that a particular format we follow?
We, the auditor typically do that for us, and then we submit it over to them to do it.
Minimum that's required by the state that we have to let the citizens know.
I've seen it in the paper, but actually, people ask me about it.
Yeah, it doesn't really give much information.
Well, that gets, you know, it's.
If you really wanna do something, you put a full page and you really outline, you know.
Well, in the interest.
Where do they advance this other period of time?
They asked me, oh, God, it was one question, but I was surprised I got asked. Something about the budget for infrastructure. That was, do we show our budget? Maybe it was a separate publication. When we do our truth and taxation and publicize our levy, do we publicize our budget in summary?
Well, the budget has the, you know, the resolution at the front that shows transfers and.
Okay, so it was a question on the budget, not the financials. One of the things I was gonna say is that some cities, in the interest of transparency, and I know how important that is, they actually PDF these reports and put them on our website. The former city administrator, when I suggested that, said, "Are you crazy?"
Yeah.
All kinds of questions, but.
People are really interested that much, they can come find them.
But you remove that hurdle and.
Well, then, but if they're really that interested, they'll make the effort.
I know, it takes the presentation off of this. We do get a PDF of the final audit and that would be a public document. So, if a citizen does request it, it's. Some cities put it on the website, though. Quite a few, actually. I mean, I've been to city websites and looked at their financials just to compare. I think it's a nice thing to do, but I do get this "are you crazy" thing, too, so.
I don't think you're crazy.
Thank you.
I think it makes sense, actually.
Yeah. I would like to see them on there, frankly. I would. Because people, I think if people understood better how government works, they'd be more understanding of the decisions we make.
I think, I don't think they would understand. I think the average citizen, you know, you guys work with this day in and day out, and you're looking at financials, are we still on?
It would take, be a time consumer for you? Okay. On that basis, I'll withdraw my suggestion.
And I think most of it is, is what are our priorities? I think that's more of the people question. Who prioritizing our spending?
That's more, that's more indicative in the budget than it is in the, yeah. All right.
Further discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 Well, yes, motion is carried and authorization to do the publication of the newspaper is approved. Item number five, is there anything under that?
Well, the Human Resources Committee had met on Monday. Field the finance officer position. They're gonna meet with another person this coming Monday. If things don't work out with this candidate we're gonna talk to on Monday, we may consider this Monday. The meeting is at 2:30 on Monday. We might make a recommendation about the average expert. Now and then, I do wanna call and get some estimated costs in order. Or may have a recruiter involved in helping us train for the position. That's what he did a couple minutes before he became the leader of Minnesota Cities. He indicated, felt the finance director or finance officer position is, a couple of mid-level ones that fell in the soul. Listen for that and they have that available to the Human Resources Committee.
Nothing further to discuss on these items that join the meeting?